Seven o'clock, call meeting order, stand for the pledge please. Okay, again, a motion to accept the minutes of, um...
So move.
Okay, have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Get motion except the financial report and payment of bills.
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, Steve, I see we have some budget amendments.
Yes, I have two budget amendments, first is budget amendment number 2013 dash 019. This increases the parts and wreck facilities up there expenses account by $114,000. That is coming from the $43,000 we have received as your excess of revenue. In addition to $71,000 on the unbalanced that was assigned for the parts and wreck facilities.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept budget amendment 2013 dash 019?
I'll accept.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
The second budget amendment number is 2013 dash 020 is to increase our apartment public works street depaying the expense account by $403,500. That is on the unbalanced that is restricted for the reservation project. That's a lot of user end that we have received and I have extended for many purposes.
Our motion except budget amendment 2013 dash 020.
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, we have a very special presentation to make this evening. So if Chief Ryan, the board can come down front.
Oh, he's already at the front.
Get to stand up.
American Commissioner of the Town of Elkton to Chief of Police William Ryan. Vietnam, American Commissioners and the citizens of Elkton's community hereby recognize the outstanding public service provided by Chief Ryan during his tenure to office beginning January 25, 2005, to July 12, 2013. Concerned with the town's Elkton's Chief of Police since September 22, 2005. Chief Ryan's leadership, knowledge, experience, and initiative has resulted in raising the professional standards of Elkton Police Department. Along with the professionalism instilled in the men and women who serve under his command, we hereby extend our sincere appreciation to Chief Ryan along with a certificate of special recognition given under our hands and shield this 10th day of July, 2013. President of Elkton City and Mayor Charles Gibbons Commissioner, Dick's Commissioner, Judge Bonsi Commissioner, Harold Fine Commissioner. Congratulations, Chief. Really, you're one of the best.
All that applause. That's it. Oh, I'm sorry. I was jealous of you. Appreciate the opportunity to serve the town and I think I've left the department in good hands and Captain Donnelly, you could act in chief when I make a decision to do that. Appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in.
You guys, would you like to make a comment?
I'd like to make one.
All right, let's sit down.
Chief, before you go, don't pack up yet. We all wanted to say a few words. I want to thank you so much for what you've done to the department over the years you've been in charge. I really think you did leave us in good hands. Everyone's where they need to be and I can't thank you enough for doing all you've done for us and I hope you enjoy your time off and with yourself, your family, your children. Enjoy.
And Chief, I just wanted to say it's been a pleasure working with you. You're one of the fine ones that I've got a chance to work with and enjoyed working with you. Come for leadership and some answers from you, you've given them to me straight and I appreciate that and hope I can see you on the golf course sometime.
Chief, I'm happy for you. I know when I retired a year ago, you asked me the question, how did I like that? And I told you fine and you followed suit. But needless to say, I certainly applaud the fact that you served us and I really like the discipline that you brought to the police department and I've always believed in life and anything and any endeavor, you've got to have discipline and certainly you provided that during your leadership.
Chief, I tell you, I ditto everyone else said, I definitely appreciate your character and your leadership. I know when I met you as a code enforcement officer, I could always confide in you. You helped me personally grow as an individual as well as a member of the community and I know you've touched a lot of people in this community like that, so I really do appreciate it and I wish you well in your new future.
Thank you so much. Yes, sir?
No, I'm not going to send you home yet, but Chief, you and I had a good relationship and I'm going to miss that promontory that we had and talking and you've done an excellent job for the police department. You really brought them full circle and you've just done a wonderful job and I know you're very respected of the men and the men respect of you and we certainly do respect you and I'll tell you one thing, we're certainly going to miss you. Don't forget to come back and say hi, let us know what you're doing, but we certainly do want you to know that we've all really appreciated everything you've done for the police department of the Town of Elkton. So enjoy your retirement and just have a lot of fun. You deserve it.
I just wanted to say Lou kept on telling me I had to come up with more money for the FYI 14 budgets, so there's my salary. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one little thing before the Elkton Chamber Alliance. I've had a little surprise I wanted to show everybody this evening. So with that, we'll do that. It involves a business that's in town and I just wanted to buy to see this video that I brought and had made up of the business. I think I will be quite impressed and after that then we'll have the Elkton Chamber. It actually comes around but has to do so much with the Elkton as well, Chamber. Turn it up. Put the mic on.
Another employee who hoped for a brighter future was Marcus. An $8 an hour assistant manager at Philly Pretzel.
How many hours do we get work here?
Sixty.
Sixty.
Five, one, 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 story, you don't have any to use for sixty, man. I have two daughters, they're the best. These girls want to eat tacos, man. Got a lot of talent to prepare for today.
We have a new kiosk version of our stores. I'm going to put out the money and open up a business together. Fifty-fifty partners.
This is probably the best thing somebody could do for me.
A few weeks after the show, Dan Disio called me up, talked to me about the kiosk thing, made it happen a little better for me. He said he had a strong enough story and he was willing to make me a hundred percent owner of that store. Of course, I agreed and here I am now in my own store. I am here every day. I have deliveries seven days a week. I have the pretzels, cheese and mustard. I still beat, I still twist, I still whip. You're welcome, thank you. They just added responsibilities, of course, but I also give them pride and it's more personal to me and it's mine, but it's wonderful. Thank you very much, I'm going to read you.
Is there anywhere I can find the boss?
Hey!
What's up, buddy?
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, man, look good.
Thank you, thank you. You changed my life.
Much better.
Well, you changed mine. My outlook on life has been changed for me. I knew you were going to do good down here, but I never expected you to do anything. And I don't know if you know how well the numbers are, but since you took over, it's up eight hundred percent. Eighty percent, so I'm not going to answer. You doubled the sales of the store since you took over, so we never could have imagined that it's going to be that good.
He's done a phenomenal job. We can't believe what he's done with this store in a short period of time. He's up more than anybody in our whole franchise system. He's up almost eighty percent since he's taken over, so he's doubled the sales of this store.
When I first met you, he kind of threw me off. He didn't know how to twist.
Just bring it to the set, you just try to spin it around two times. Are you good enough?
No. I am definitely trying to throw Marcus off. I'm twisting millions of pretzels in my day.
I know you twist thousands of pretzels, but I...
Want to race?
Let's go.
Let's do it.
Turn it up.
All right.
First one at forty, pretzel, pretzel.
First one up here, that one, one.
You're a little cocky now, huh?
I'm confident.
Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Go.
Hold that one for me.
I'm going to steal them all.
Might be the first you ever had.
Look pretty good.
This one's not done. It's one. You guys, good job.
How's it going, Dan? You remember Dan?
I love him. When I was on Undercover Boss before, Dan gave me $5,000 for each of my daughters to open college accounts. I had a financial advisor come and open it up and now we're just trying to make those accounts grow.
Daddy does a good job, huh? You guys are adorable.
I can take care of my daughters much better now. Before, it was nickel and dime. Before me, sometimes I couldn't get school pictures or send them on, you know, to class trips.
Do I get sick of pretzels?
No. Now they can do those things. I can take them somewhere, I actually have the time and the money to go and actually enjoy them.
Baby got curious since the last time I saw him.
The store for me means like endless possibilities, you know what I mean? It's my daughter's future, it's my future.
I'm so proud to be here.
Undercover Boss and Dan changed my life forever. My family thanks Dan, my daughters, I couldn't be more thankful.
Have a good one, Dan. Okay.
Okay, now I'd like to introduce you to Marcus, manager of the virtual factory. Marcus?
I just want to thank everybody. Since I've been in Elkton, I feel very welcome. As you can see, we doubled sales, so with the community support and just hard work, you know what I mean, even the struggling business can succeed even here in Elkton. And I'd like to thank you very much, the mayor, I've been working the close to you since I've been down here and, you know, I felt extremely welcome and pleased to be here and to be a part of Brooklyn City and I want to thank everybody very much.
Thank you. Marcus, come on. Some pretzels back there today?
Absolutely. I put trades and I put pretzels on the back too.
Marcus, I mentioned before, you were introduced at Reich's Church and we still buy your pretzels on every second Sunday of the month, so I know you, good to see you.
Same thing, Reich's Church and then I came to see you. The sales there, fine. Absolutely, absolutely. Great, congratulations.
Good thing about this, you see something that you don't have to say is a fake in the Town of Elkton and it's really good to see somebody do good, especially in this environment, so I'm happy for them.
Very good. Okay, again, thank you, Marcus.
Thank you.
All right, Elkton Chamber Alliance.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'll get started.
Okay.
I know where I'm going to have lunch tomorrow, I'm going to the Philly Pretzel Factory.
There you go.
Well, good, congratulations. My name is Roger Owens, I think everybody here knows me. I'm the current chairman of the Elkton Chamber Alliance. There's a long history about me, but I've been here for a long time and involved with the town, the town chamber, commerce in the old days and now the Chamber Alliance. And what we're going to do here tonight is we're going to try to give an update on some of the things that we've been working on and some of the areas where we've been involved because a lot of people don't realize that we do a lot more than just throw a parade on once in a while. We do a lot of other promotional items, we do a lot of packets that we mail out and we're going to have some of our people here give a short presentation so you don't have to hear me talk the whole time. To my left, we have Margie Lyston, she's going to give us a presentation on the design and the arts and entertainment district. We're also going to have Kathy Kuhn to give us a presentation on our economic restructuring. In addition, we have Mary Beth Zidowski Cole, who's going to talk about our budget year to date, we're going to tell you how we're doing so far and then our vice chairman Larry Kraus is going to give us some updates on our organization. All the while, we're going to have a PowerPoint presentation going in your packet, it's all the slides from the PowerPoint presentation and that's Jessica Price has put that together for us. So at this point, oh, one other announcement I wanted to make before, our people talk here, is the entire staff of the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development will be visiting on Tuesday, including Secretary Raymond Skinner. And the reason they're visiting is because we are a Maryland Main Street program. We made it as a Maryland Main Street program, a Main Street program, like a national Main Street program several years ago and that's a big deal, the economic development, people notice this and also we'll be covering this in the presentation, when the National Main Street Organization has their convention here in Maryland, this is one of the towns that everyone wants to invite, everyone wants to visit. So we'll mention that during our presentation. At this point, I think we're going to let Margie go first?
Michael, first? Oh.
Margie go first.
Yay.
Oh, Larry goes first, okay. Well, Larry's getting ready to go first again, I just want to thank you for letting us come tonight, appreciate it and appreciate all the help the town has given us over the years too. When we do various functions, there's always been someone there from the police, some public works and we appreciate that. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor. As the organization... As the chairperson here of the organization committee, our goal in the organization committee is to get a consensus and cooperation amongst the groups of individuals in the town to help the revitalization of the town, as you have up here. And the Chamber, the Elkton Chamber Alliance Board, we serve that for you guys. The Elkton Chamber has received $9,900 in dues this year over seventy-five members of this community right here. We help by advertising local businesses who participate in the alliance. We also do ribbing cutting, ribbing cuttings such as the hurricane wings, Belconnel Emporium and so on and so forth up there. We do have a couple that are coming up, you know, new businesses here in town, the Atmosphere Barbershop, Co-Boys Restaurant and the Verizon Store, I think everybody has seen out by McDonald's, which is much needed since we, I don't believe we have a Verizon store anymore in town. Each month at the meetings, I open up a report for the organization committee on how many members we have currently, new members as well as returning members. And then I'll report on our balance and dues for each individual month. I open the conversation up at that time for the board members to discuss on how to bring new members to the board as well as we have, as well as the returning members who have not signed up or have forgotten or so on and so forth, but we talk every month on how to bring new people and, you know, different ideas on how to do this. I close each month, each month during the meeting with, I tell everybody on the board, I said, listen, email me, contact me, do whatever it takes, you know, to help bring new members to our board. I will go out and, you know, talk to them and tell them what the chamber has to offer for them and help bring business to this town. So in a rap, that's basically what we do as an organizational committee. I hope, I hope you understood a little bit of that because I was kind of all over the place, but I think last year I was kind of all over the place at the same time. So that's what we do. That's what I do.
We certainly welcome any questions while we're making this presentation.
Good, I got a question. If I'm a new business and I ask you whether you have to offer me, what would you tell me?
Well, we have, we have some pamphlets downtown at our...
No, no, I understand that, I'm just making sure he knows his subject matter, that's all.
Well, we, say the question again, please.
I'm a new member, let's use the Atmosphere Barbershop for instance and before, of course they're there now, and before I come to complete, what would you tell me that you have to offer me?
Well, yes.
I'll do exactly what did the Atmosphere. Hi, my name's Mary Beth Cole, I've lived here for forty-nine years and welcome to our town. Let me introduce you around. I went to my pharmacy, I sat them down, I gave them a coke, and then I told them the history of Elkton, I said, you know where you are right now? You are in the marriage capital of the world. And I gave them a history of what was going on in the town. I said, now that you're coming here, I'd like to invite you to be a part of the organization that supports this town and helps us grow, it's called the Elkton Chamber Alliance. It's made up of local businesses here, we all pull together to support not only each other's businesses, but we work together to support the community out there. We offer such fun events as the Fall Fest, the Halloween Parade, and I talked about all the various community involvements. I said, when you bring people downtown for the community, you bring them in to support your business. So we talk about the various things that are interesting in your particular business. It's no good for me to talk about prescription drugs because guess what? You're not selling prescription drugs, you're selling haircuts. So you want to see the people that are going to come downtown, they're going to be interested in your business. It's a one-on-one interaction that makes you feel welcome, opens you up and puts you as part of our community and that's what we have here. We're a community, we're a family and we're the Town of Elkton.
I like that, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And you were already talking about, you want to go ahead and do your presentation next?
Let me tell them.
Does anybody else have any other questions? I'm sorry, if anybody else has...
Okay, well, all this wonderful goodwill does come at an expense and we do need a budget to be able to run our organization. The revenue that runs our organization came from last year, a town grant for $50,000. We collected dues of $10,000 and we ran events that budgeted around $55,000. Unfortunately, we didn't have any revenue that brought us for seminars or businesses. We did get a state grant of $1,400 and miscellaneous donation of $1,000. We did some great advertising, if any of you got to see the Maryland Magazine where we were actually centerfold in the magazine, $1,000 and there was a transfer from the credit card of $3,000. That brought our total revenue for the year $121,400. The expenses, we have a payroll, a very minimal nominal payroll and these ladies that run this organization are worth far more than what they're compensated, $46,000. We had to contribute to the government $14,000 in taxes, professional services $2,000, phone $2,400, to clean the office $800, office supplies to run it $4,000, to be able to attend seminars and business meetings $1,000, to participate in advertising and promotion programs $3,000. Then to actually run the events was $45,000. The insurance we have to carry $1,200, we had some minor equipment expenses that roughly charged about $1,000 and there were some miscellaneous things that came in for $1,000. That gave us a total for the year of $121,400, so we met our budget and were able to stay within the limits of our budget. If we look at our on-hand year-to-date comparison, I'm not going to bore you with all the details, you just look down, right now our total revenue, we're taking in about $1747 of the total of $8,223.93. Our expenses, the payroll, the events, et cetera, takes us to a monthly expense of[1603.86][1604.04]$5,418.49. We have a balance on hand of $2,805.44. Mathematically, I can't see a balance sheet that can be any more equal. I mean, we're running within our limits. Questions?
One thing that I support the Elkton Alliance because of the things that you do in the town, one of the things that always comes to mind is a question, without the Elkton Alliance, what would the town have and what would be able to do? That's one of the questions you can answer for me.
Sure, if you didn't have the Elkton Alliance and you want to compare yourself to just your neighboring towns, Habity Grays, Newark, et cetera, you would be responsible to coming up with your own economic development plan, hiring an economic development director and a staff to go along with it. Comparatively, you'd be looking at numbers anywhere that would start at $200,000 to $300,000 of cost to the Town of Elkton. The services just alone that these people provide are all volunteer, there are no payrolls involved in it. So if we cease to exist and you wanted to continue to provide economic development for the Town of Elkton, you would be required to go out and hire an economic development director and fund that budget and then fund the staff necessary and fund these additional programs.
And the reason why I ask that question, when I was on the school board, we had that question asked to us and we was trying to figure out how we could work with the school system and Kathy is a good person to confess on this. The thing is, we have a lot that Elkton Chamber Alliance does for us and keep entertainment going. If the volunteers weren't involved and we didn't support them, then we'll be worse shape than some people think we are now. But I understand that, I know they try to phase out, when I say they, we're trying to phase out you guys operating on your own, but the thing is, my point I'm trying to make, if we don't support it, we won't have anything to look back at, so that's my point of view.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We're going to move on and we're going to have Margie, do you want to talk now? I'll put a note at this time, sorry.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Commissioners, for allowing me to come and speak tonight. I head up the Design Committee downtown and the Arts and Entertainment District. I'm going to go through some of the events that I've helped through volunteering with the Elkton Alliance to bring about. First Fridays in Elkton have become a mainstay for the Elkton community with Artistic Chris Studios, Art Space on Main, Cecil College Elkton Station, The Palette and The Page, Cecil County Arts Council, all being involved in Elkton Art Loop is what we call it on the first Friday of each month. And every Friday night, the community can also... And every Friday night, the community can also enjoy the Performing Arts at Gracie's Cafe Open Mic Night. If you've never been, three dollars gets you in the door. Three dollars, you get in Gracie's bucks for the snack bar, and it's free entertainment. It is music, poetry, great bands. And the bands sign up at seven o'clock, they start playing at seven-thirty, and it goes till ten P.M. And it is just, it, it's a lot of fun, and it's basically a free evening for everyone. They have Mr. Trivia that comes in between acts, and it's, it's a great way for people to mingle and get together in a nice, safe environment. A popular first Friday event has been known to attract roughly, roughly a hundred and fifty people. Regular attendance is roughly fifty to seventy-five attendees. The hundred and fifty number comes from the Empty Bowls Event that Art Space on Main does annually each October first Friday. And the other numbers are from the Palette and Page. And I should say that I am one of the co-owners of the Palette and Page. There are four women who, who run that. We regularly do creative writing workshops, poetry readings, and we have become sort of a mainstay for the community to come in, especially for the first Friday events. I'd like to take a moment to note how the Palette and Page got started and its significance to the resurgence of downtown, of downtown Elton. I'm not saying that just because I'm one of the owners. It was through the Elton Alliance that the co-op got its start. In November two thousand nine, a meeting with the owner of the empty shop on Main Street, Mary Jo was able to negotiate a low rent, a portion of which was covered by the Elton Alliance while we tried to gather artists together. We started out with six local artists, and they were brought on board to sell their work during the holiday season, and we held our very first first Friday event in December of that year. In January two thousand ten, the artists opted to remain in the shop and pay their own rent, which the building owner agreed to remain low. This was done through the Alliance. As the co-op didn't have a bank account, we were working merely on a cash basis. We had no phone, and the fact that this business is what it is today is a minor miracle. June twenty-ten, we had an artist come on with the co-op who had an extensive retail background. And in January two thousand eleven, she was one of the women, along with five others, who formed the Palette and the Page LLC. In two thousand thirteen, now two and a half years later, the gallery is a thriving business recording record increases in sales each year. Two thousand twelve showed a thirty percent increase in sales over the previous year, and we're currently surpassing our goal of another thirty percent gain this year. The Palette and Page is currently tracking a forty-five percent increase in sales over two thousand twelve, with a record month in April of this year which netted two hundred and thirty percent gain in sales over April, proving that through hard work and with a smart business plan, success is attainable in Elton. And I think we found that through Pretzel Factory also. The following are some of the events implemented by the Elton Alliance via the Design Committee. Efforts were made by the Design Committee to host events on Main Street each Friday during the holiday season in two thousand twelve. We excluded the December twenty-first, because we knew that was getting a little too close for activities, and people were already very busy with holidays. We had a Cash for Christmas promotion that was sponsored by the Cecil Guardian, and that, we're, we're still working to try and make that a bigger event. We plan on doing that again this year, tweaking it a little bit, but it, it was huge support by, by Bill Freitas at the Guardian that we were able to bring that about. The Alliance Tree Lighting is another ceremony that's held, and it was the Palette and the Page that started the very first cookie throw-down competition, in which we have different members of the business community who take part in making the best cookie. And yes, I am three years...
Come on, Jess.
I want one.
But we have the community come in, try the cookies, and they vote, and it is a very fair contest. Last year, we also had the Belchoir Caroline Event, the Elton Alliance, and that was in conjunction with the Last Night of the Cash for Christmas. This brought people downtown to shop, and it did, people, there was an increase in sales, Elton Florist reported, by having more people taking part in this event to turn in their receipts, and whoever spent the most money downtown ended up winning cash, and it was five hundred dollars. Each of the events I've indicated are promoted for the betterment of our merchants, to inspire pride and a sense of ownership in our fair town of Elton, and promote a sense of community to those who live here. This can best be sustained through community participation. Any support we receive from our town leaders is greatly appreciated, and we believe will contribute to the validity of a community event. In mid-March, I met with the National Arts Honor Society students at Elton High School to discuss the Before I Die Wall in our community. And I don't know if any of you have noted this, on Main Street, there is a black wall that says "Before I Die" on it, and several lines where the community can fill in, "Before I Die, I Want To." It's an art project designed to provide the community an opportunity for reflection, contemplation, and making time for what's important. Most importantly, it's about building a sense of community through our connection with one another. Over thirty students signed up to be a part of this project. They actually wrote a letter to the Elton Alliance. They got together, I had it within a day, that they put a letter together stating that they thought this was a very important project to bring to downtown Elton, an important part of building the community. Let's see, there were other volunteers that were involved in the Before I Die Project. Jen Fox, who is the advisor to the National Arts Honor Society and an Elton High art teacher. John Berry, who is Cecil County School of Technology shop teacher, was involved, and Mr. Berry's shop class students helped prep the wall. American Home and Hardware donated the plywood for the wall. And Beth Zeke of the American Cancer Society was also involved in helping us get it installed. Two workdays were involved to prep the install, to prep and install the project. The unveiling took place during May first Friday Paint the Town Purple event. I would like to make note, the Alliance spent approximately two hundred dollars to procure the Before I Die kit, the chalkboard and spray paint for the project. American Home and Hardware donated the plywood, and Mr. John Berry provided the fasteners and labor to attach the project to the fence, for which the Alliance had to gain permission from the property owner. While doing research online of other Before I Die projects across the country, I discovered that a group in Portland, Oregon, used a Kickstarter campaign to raise twenty-six hundred dollars for their Before I Die Wall in their city. I say it's a testament to the amazing people in our town that our wall was erected with a mere two hundred dollars and the help and support of volunteers and sponsors. Planning meetings were also held in, in order to organize the Paint the Town Purple event with volunteers from the American Cancer Society, and it was the youth group from Cross, from the Crossroads Organization who planted the purple pansies in the prodigious pots on Main Street. I, I challenge you to say that three times fast. That also helped with the impact of our Paint the Town Purple event. On Tuesday, June fourth, Mary Jo Jablonsky and I attended the annual A&E Conference in Highland Town, Maryland.
Before you go any further, maybe it's appropriate for me to ask the question right now. I've stopped and I've read, you know, the responses that are on the, on the wall there, "Before I Die." But my question is, and I come through and I look over, is that theme gonna always be the same, "Before I Die," or will that ever change?
That, that wall is going to stay up until the end of Fall Fest.
But it's always gonna be the same thing?
Yes.
Okay, that's my question.
Yes. And we invite people to add answers to it. Sometimes the answers aren't very appropriate, but it's been an interesting project in that members of the community have taken ownership of that and erased some of the, the work that's gone, the things that have gone up. I can tell you that I have watched people, I watched a girl for about thirty minutes sitting on the ground writing, "Before I Die, I Want to Make Gracie Proud." And she did this with every color chalk, and it wasn't the first time she added that answer. There are just amazing stories that I've seen, and we're hoping to partner with the Guardian to remind people about this wall and the stories that have come out of it, because we know that some people have seen the negative things that have gone up and wonder, "Why do we have this thing up there?" So, people can just add their graffiti to it. But there have been stories that have come out where it is making a difference. So, we want to impart that to the community and, and remind them that it's their wall, and they can take ownership of it. So, let's see, where was I? Okay, so we went to the A&E Conference in Highland Town, Maryland. This is the fourth annual A&E Conference I've attended, and they are a vital method for connecting with the members of other A&E districts and those who work with state legislators to provide funding and information for those of us managing our districts. As Chairman of Elton's A&E District, I'm charged with the task of compiling and filing our district's annual reports and submitting it to the State Arts Council in a timely manner. Future design projects that I'm currently working on is the Bridge Street Mural Project, which the Mayor is familiar with. Following the Before I Die Project, I was approached by a few of the NAHS students at Elton High who worked on the wall and asked me, "What's the next project? What do we get to do next?" They loved being a part of that project. They loved doing something for their community. So, I say, strike while the iron's hot, and with the help of Mayor Fisano, we're working to gain approval from the state highway by submitting a design plan for the Bridge Street Bridge. I will be meeting with the newly-elected NAHS council members in August to go over the plan and presenting it to the rest of the students when classes resume in September. It is my hope to begin the mural in mid-October, weather permitting, and I'm pleased to add, the Alliance has procured money for this project with a fifteen-hundred-dollar grant from Walmart. We're also working on a sidewalk chalk art competition. This event will be held in conjunction with the grand franchise reopening of Elton Florist. There's still a date to be determined on this, and a call will go out to area artists, artists who wish to take part. Judges will be chosen, and a cash prize will be awarded for most creative work. And this is part of implementing art in our A&E district. We have different art venues, but we want to have art-related activities for the community to enjoy or take part in. Let's see. Now I have my personal comments here. My impression of the reason we're here tonight is to account for and perhaps defend the existence of the Elton Alliance. I ask, what would this town be without the Elton Alliance? Would there be, be anything to bring people into town? Any events encouraging the community to gather together for fun and fellowship? A place to inquire about Main Street business opportunities? You may wonder, why do, why do these, my fellow board members, take time away from their respective businesses and busy schedules to attend meetings? Is it solely based on protecting their interests? I invite you to ask each of them what it is that keeps bringing them to the table. For myself, it's been the burning desire to bring people together and building a sense of community. I'm not in this for profit or gain, for profit or for gain, and if my husband were here tonight, he would greatly attest to that. For me, there is no greater sense of pride than seeing people attend a first Friday event and greet their friends on the street, stopping to chat a while and share a handshake, or to witness a parking lot filled with kids and parents in costumes anticipating a Halloween parade. You might think it's silly, but the overwhelming joy I felt at having the opportunity to be a judge in the two thousand twelve Halloween parade leaves me hoping with all my heart I'll get asked to take part again this year. It was so fulfilling to be a part of an event which included such a large dose of community participation. The relationship between the Elton Alliance and the business community is a symbiotic one. Local businesses give a great deal of support to this town. For instance, Art Space on Main supports the Women's Children's Shelter through their annual Empty Bowls Event. Cecil Guardian supports community events via feature articles and was instrumental in partnering with the Elton Alliance for the Cash for Christmas campaign. Elton Florist donates gorgeous floral arrangements for an extensive number of events each year. They also were the, the group that provided the pansies every year for the Paint the Town Purple Project. And it's no secret that PNC Bank offers their financial support for nearly every major event that the Elton Alliance holds. These and many other businesses value what the Elton Alliance does for this town. In turn, the Elton Alliance supports these businesses through events planning, economic development, computer support, promotions, and an open-door policy for airing thoughts, grievances, and ideas. All of this provided by the administrative staff of Mary Jo Jablonsky and Jessica Price, along with Kim Anders, who is technically working for the Cecil County Boys and Girls Club, but we all know she's there to pick up a phone and answer a question regardless which side of the desk the subject matter may fall. Surely, without the continued support from the Mayor and Commissioners, the Elton Alliance and ultimately the town will fall like a house of cards to those who would like nothing more than to see the streets teeming with drugs and prostitution. Turn the light out on the Elton Alliance, and the dark underbelly emerges. Keep the light burning, and with your support, we can continue to increase its brightness and see to it that the underlings scatter, because you can't maintain illicit trade when members of your community are on the streets, spending their time, enjoying their town, shopping, mingling, and enjoying everything we have developed and continue to build on offering this community. Thank you.
I know your business is to provide the incentives to bring people into the town of Elton, and certainly you've done a remarkable job. However, have you all, together in a concerted effort, talked about the negatives that exist downtown?
The negative.
I, I know law enforcement is responsible, but somehow or the other, I guess, you, I won't say have ownership, but you, you certainly want to see it go away. Have you discussed that at all?
I have personally gone to several of the business owners downtown and discussed with them issues of when you see drugs being handed back and forth, what they are to do, if they feel threatened in any way, what they are to do. What has happened in the past is they have gone to the Elton Alliance and said, "Oh, you know, last week I had a guy that was doing a drug deal out front of my shop." Well, that doesn't help anything. So, what I instructed them through discussions with Mary Jo and Jessica is that, "You see something happening, you immediately call 911." And they didn't realize that they had that opportunity to do that. They felt that calling 911 was only a matter of emergency, but we were instructed by the police department that if you saw anything going on downtown. So, we have had these discussions. It is something that's there, but the more that we have these events, I have seen people that you don't really wanna see downtown nowhere in sight when you've got a lot of people wandering around and going between different shops. So, the more that we're able to offer that, they go elsewhere.
Right. Good point.
Before you get started, I'd make a quick comment as well. I mean, I, I like to, first of all, you presented everything, I think, very clearly and very well.
Thank you.
And to no surprise to myself and sure to the board, you, you guys do a tremendous amount of volunteerism and so forth for the benefit of the town, in the downtown area. I'd like to present you with a challenge, though. And that challenge is that, you know, to my knowledge, as a board, we've never discussed phasing you out. I think I heard that. I don't think we've ever discussed that. So, I would like to put the challenge out, that you don't, you don't come trying to defend yourself, but what you do is you come to the, you come to the board and the town and the citizens just educate you. Again, showing us, giving us a clear picture of what's going on, what your thoughts are, what your thought processes are, and believe me, I know you have meetings all over about that, but that's the, that's one of the best tools that we have, is continually educating the community on what's going on. And I think it's working. I do think it's working. I have some specific questions later on about downtown, but I think it's working. I do challenge you to look at it just a little bit different, as not defending yourselves, but just promoting yourselves and, and just giving us a clearer view in the town, a clearer view, educating everyone on what's going on.
I agree with you. I do wanna make the point, though, with the budget constraints continually being cut and trying to maintain and do the things that we want to do and achieve the things we want. that we want to achieve is making it more and more difficult, which then puts us on the, you know, the defense and, and trying to, um, trying to prove our point that we need this. This is very important for us. And I, I respect what you're saying and I, and I hope that I didn't come off as too... But it's, it, it is a struggle when you're working so hard to achieve something and you don't have the full support. You don't, um, you're, you're, you're holding events, but you don't have your town, uh, leaders there for an event to show that it's an important part of, um, of community. So, um, so, yes, I, I do end up on the side of being defensive about it. Thank you.
But see, you, you also, I think, just misconstrued a statement that you made. I know, uh, some, a lot of events that are there and you don't see. And the last event, we were there and there was, I forget what it was, and a lady putting the paper off, she saw it was Earl.
Yeah.
I was there, Mary Jo was there, so you never know who's around supporting it.
Unfortunately, we've had some negative publicity in the newspaper and, and one of the persons who writes in a lot actually worked for the Elton Chamber years and years ago, and I think that, and you may explain it, because like you say, the, uh, memorial did great.
Yeah, sure.
Almost everybody was there. Jo was standing next to me and she acted like...
And nearly.
And Mary Jo was standing there and I didn't, I never stalled that woman there. So, I'm not really sure what to think about that negative publicity and, uh, but we, we will do our best to get things back positive.
Thanks.
Okay. Um, shall we move on? We're gonna have Kathy Hunda talk about economic restructuring.
I always hate following her because she does such a great job. And as this committee started, we started out as co-chairs, but she became so busy, all of a sudden I missed one meeting and they made me the chair. So, I'll do the best I can. Main Street is in very good hands. Um, would we like more of those shops occupied? Absolutely. Um, how are we gonna do that? We need to make sure that we continually try to do what we can to attract big business, high-tech business. Uh, when I read in the paper that Vassell, they, he was thinking about turning it into another warehouse, I, like, my heart sunk because we need, we are in such a great area for a technology park. And so much is being done around us that eventually it has to spill over to, to us. President, let me define the, the, um, the goal of the Economic Restructuring Committee is to strengthen the district's existing economic base while finding ways to expand it to meet new opportunities and challenges from outlying development. The outlying development, I believe, is really going to help us rather than hurt us as long as the county continues to work with the town to make sure that we have the infrastructure and the technology that these companies that are coming, that need to come here, um, will have. I participated on the county economic, uh, strategic planning on the land use, land, um, use subcommittee with Ms. Mynner, and, um, the full report is posted on the, uh, on the county website. We all received one of these. There were five sub, subcommittees, and, um, each of us were challenged to do a SWOT analysis. And now in September and October, we're supposed to be coming up with our recommendations, what, what needs to become. Great, um, information went back to our county executive to make things happen because if she doesn't do it, it's not gonna happen down that growth corridor. And we, and I know we want more business in town, but unless we make sure that the growth corridor, smart growth is happening down to 40, um, our towns are gonna die. Elton, on the other hand, is in a very good position right now, um, because we're, we're waiting on the, um, enterprise application. Hopefully, in two weeks, we'll, we'll get an affirmative that that is going through, that our, our enterprise zones are reclassified as enterprise zones and we can start to get some building and, and some structure in there. When that happens, we'll be very positive about this. They do have a, um, a state grant called Volt. It's from the Video Lottery Terminals, and it's for, um, small business, minority, women-owned businesses, technology motivated, 150 to almost 300,000 ballers is what they can, they can apply for. It's a very simple grant if they have the base, the technology and the information and the place to go. So, hopefully, when the, that grant hopefully comes through at the end of the month, that application, that we will, um, be able to start looking at those enterprise zones and promoting them more. I know that the county, uh, economic office is, is really excited about getting started, getting started with that. Our economic partners, we couldn't do what we do without our economic partners, the, the county government economic office, uh, the Cecil Business Resource Partners. And the reason the Cecil Business Resource Partners is important because they need on a regular basis so that they keep all the constituents, um, involved in economic growth, in education, everything that, that builds a strong community of Cecil County. So, um, that, that, those partners are BPAC, Cecil College, the Cecil County Chamber of Commerce, the Cecil County Library, the Maryland Department of Business and Economic Development, and our Small Business Administration is, is at the table as well, and the Susquehanna Workforce Network. Uh, we can't lose sight of what's going on over at the University of Delaware, the former, um, Chrysler site. The Bloom Energy, they have, they are, it, working. They are looking for employees. They continually are seeking skilled workers, making sure that whatever, some of the Chrysler workers get the education they need so that they can hire them. And, uh, they're going on even while they're continuing to build their facility. Um, the School of Allied Health, uh, is moving forward. We had a presentation by the developer from the University of Delaware at the Economic Commission meeting in June. And, um, they are limited right now in the occupancy that they have, but they expect to be full operation, School of Allied Health, uh, by the fall semester of 2015. So, that is great news for us because our schools, our college, have articulations with the University of Delaware. So, that'll continue to grow. And as those businesses and those professions come into that park, they have to, they will have some of the residual effect on what's going on over there, I'm sure of it. And of course, you can't, um, you, uh, oh, one of our other partners, they, they get a lot of flack about the Cecil County, um, Economic Development being part of the Greater Baltimore Alliance. But they, when you're talking about technology and having a technology park right here in the town of Elton, and we need to be thinking that, even if there's small companies around in the areas. Greater Baltimore, you talk about a spillover and pushing for technology, we are prying between the University of Delaware and Aberdeen Proven Ground. So, being a partner with, with Baltimore is extremely important to us because those companies that are based in Baltimore need satellite locations and they want to be up here where the Technology Park in, in University of Delaware is, as well as what's going on down in Hartford County. So, we're primed to be a big part of what's going on there. Um, economic, of course, economic development, we can't talk about that unless you talk about education, and that was my asset to this, to this committee, uh, working so closely with the businesses over the years in the region. So, I covered all three counties. Vassell is still in discussions with the public schools on our tech school. And after going to the, uh, Susquehanna Youth Council meeting this morning and hearing about the, the age of our construction workers in this county, their estimating is the, the average age is 62 in our construction and to support companies for our construction. So, in, in Hartford County, they, they had an analysis that it was 47. We can't get workers to fill those jobs. So, we need to make sure that if we can give any support to a comprehensive technical high school, we need to be there for that. Especially with the caliber of the students that are coming out of the School of Technology right now. Imagine if it was a comprehensive, the skill level that they would be adding. The Northeastern Maryland Technology Council just released their new directory. This is important to us because as I work with the college on STEM and beyond and Career Blast, that is funded partially by our partners, our business partners, I use this directory to get those businesses in here to work with our kids. And the Susquehanna, um, Youth Council had funding this year for summer internships. And these are the at-risk, um, student, children, children, 16 to 24, um, that are working with client, uh, contractors of the Susquehanna workforce. There's four of them. There's two in Hartford County and two here, Project Cross Roses, one is Dunn, Hinkelman Accord is the other, here in Cecil County. And we found out today that there will be money for their clients to have internships and the applications will be available in March. So, that's great because in Hartford County, they have 20, they have 20 spots is summer internships and most of them, you've been hired full-time. So, that, that's great for us that we will have that opportunity in March. And I would be remiss if I didn't. I, I know budgets are tight and we come back every year asking for your support and you're very generous with what you've been able to give us in the past. But as we continue to grow, as the counties around us continue to expand, the county gets on board and gets the infrastructure, we really need to keep the idea of having a economic development person on board, um, as one of your employees. So, I just ask you to keep that in mind. This is a great community. I'm so excited about being a part of it. And I had to retire in, in order to get to work and match what she's doing in downtown to the, for the whole town of Elton. So, thank you very much.
Okay, one thing then, you're talking about the economic restructuring, basically the town. Do we have a plan, specific plan now to bring the town back up, seeing as we've kind of lost some of our major, um, stores here and our, our big one there, of course, we all know, Howard House? I mean, is there a plan to try to bring all these businesses back or bring some businesses in town again?
It is, it is hard right now. Um, we're getting, not maybe, it's other agencies have reported that the town, the fees, the water fees, I, I, you know, I went to get my nails done one day and the guy was saying, "I don't know, I think I have to leave." It's like, you're kidding. And I think Capriades is thinking about it too because the landlords are putting those fees on them, of course, because they have to recruit. And I, I don't know how to get around that. I guess a little education about, you know, where we were, where we need to go and, you know, yes, it's tough right now. I believe that once the county gets its act together and gets what we need, um, as far as infrastructure, you need water, it has to be here for them. You need water and sewers, and, uh, that's what we're gonna be attracting, you know, trying to attract. But, uh, I don't know what to do about development, especially since Maryland is not a business-friendly state. And we're not the only ones feeling it. I mean, they are leaving the state. So, the technology companies come in here because the military's here. And we're lucky, um, I, 300, um, families are moving from Yuma, Arizona. The new unit is moving into Aberdeen. I expect them to be here, so we get more, we're gonna become the bedroom community if we don't do something to attract these businesses. Hopefully, that enterprise zone comes through for us at the end of the month. That'll help because that's an enticement to bring big business in. And when the big business is there, the retail will come and they'll be successful. I mean, right now, if we don't have the business to support the retails, they're not gonna come. We'll work on it. I mean, we'll, we'll look at other communities that are building. I mean, Frederick, you know, they've done tremendous work in Frederick County, but, um, I'm, I'll work as close as I can with the county to, to see what they can do to help us. They've got some really smart gals up there, um, that are willing to work with us in any way, any way they can to help us grow our town, because they know Elton's one of the, the primary areas for growth.
And to follow up there, the, um, specific question you had about the Howard House there, um, representatives from the Elton Alliance have met with no less than probably 10 or 12 prospective buyers there. In other words, you've been involved with anybody that will listen, anybody that will allow us to show, anybody that will allow us to walk through a range of interview. And, uh, we just, and nobody's come along if this is only to move forward. And part of it may be economic reasons, one, it's a bigger project, you know, they can afford. Two, possibly that they, um, that they're scared of downtown, meaning that they're not sure they're gonna be busy enough. We don't know. But, uh, we are absolutely involved with that and any other empty space, not just downtown, but anywhere within the town area. Um, we just noticed earlier some of the ribbon cuttings we did, they weren't downtown, but we were involved with them. We wanted to make sure that we were involved, even if they're a Route 40 business or if they're a Bridge Street business, because all that will help, uh, our downtown businesses eventually.
Okay. Another couple of other questions I have was the fact that there's five, uh, committees, so to speak, that they have through the Maryland Main Street. One, I've never seen one, is Promotion Committee, and also they just started the New Clean, Safe, and Green Committee. Are, are we gonna have something, are those gonna be started up or?
The Promotion Committee.
Yeah, the Promotion Committee, I'll call it a second. Um, Green is actually kind of merged into the Economic Development. Um, they're, they're kind of somewhere in what, what they're doing. Um, so it's kind of already merged into that. It's not, it is a newer one, so they haven't really, I guess, beefed up those.
Can I, can I say something? I don't look at... That is the Be Smart Program as well. The Be Smart Program that was started, that I hope everybody's taken advantage of, that's started at the Elton Alliance with the, uh, that was the green part of the Be, uh, the Safe and Green. But, um, we had gotten a committee together, and I think I just told you about this today earlier, uh, as far as American Energy, we had to get a committee together that was going around and promote the Be Smart Program to cut, get your home audit it, um, so, uh, through Delmarva, and there were two people at the time in the state of Maryland that were actually licensed to come to your house to do the audit. One was on our committee. And so, we went, gone to a meeting in Crownsville and, uh, we started the committee and then he realized it was so successful for him, he started a business. He needed a space. I showed him a space actually across the street from our office. He rented the space there and now probably has 10 people working for him or, or more, and it's been wonderful. And if you haven't had the energy audit done on your home, please do. I have the brochures in my office. They do it right there. They change every light bulb in your house. They put, uh, something on your faucets. They change your showerheads. And they give you two power strips that are energy efficient. So, that is the, the green part of that. The Safe is working with your police force and if you see things that are happening that we've done all along, but they now just want you to report because some towns, they are having more problems with vandalism and things like that. And, um, the Clean is, you know, going around like, she, Margie and the Design Committee has had a committee pulling weeds and, uh, filling the planters with new flowers and things like that.
Well, I can certainly attest to the thing about what she just said about coming in and changing the light bulbs and everything, because I did have that done. And that was very, very interesting what they did and hopefully maybe my, some of my bills will start going down. So, it is a good idea and I think everybody should, should get involved and it's all free.
All free.
To tell you, I would start strongly advise everybody to do it too, because I've already experienced it and it's a, it's a great, great thing that I've done.
That's one of the things that the advertising, the constant marketing, um, even to the outside, I think that what Margie is doing downtown, all the activities and things and marketing, because, um, if one of the problems that the, especially the gals aren't from this area, they, um, people don't know where Cecil County is. And you know that. You go around the state and they say, "Well, where is Cecil County?" You know, they, half of them don't even know what part of Maryland. So, and these are our legislators. So, we have some real issues there too. But marketing and pushing our, what we're doing here and getting great press, and we have to do our own. I mean, our, our website, getting the word out and emails and so on. So, we, I think, um, we couldn't do it without Jessica and Margie's help downtown. So, we'll, we'll continue to, to grow, I'm sure.
Okay, at this point, Jessica Price, uh, should you, uh, do a presentation?
Just a quick, just a quick comment. Jessica. I think you, that economic development part is like one of the toughest parts, I'm sure, out of all of it. I personally have a very, I personally have a very positive, uh, span and outlook for the Elton Alliance. I won't repeat everything that I said last year and all, but, you know, one of the first things that, that really opened me up was when I received that package when I first moved here. And that was just an awesome thing. It just made everything a lot better. With that said, and all the positive things that you guys do, and it is noted, I need to make sure that what, a, a majority of what I hear, and I'm sure you do as well, downtown is dying. Downtown is dying. And I know the mayor, you know, just asked briefly on it. But do, do we have a specific plan as to really try to go after, like, changing that, actually changing that makeup of the businesses and maybe going out to... I heard one of our board members talk about, um, you know, a smaller, big franchise, like a KFC downtown or, or those type of things, or setting up... those type of things or setting up those type of meetings and maybe trying to get multiple businesses like that onboard for some type of plan? You know, we've got the hospital, we've got, you know, major people that we should be able to possibly pull over. I know they've got their own restaurants and all, but, you know, it's, it's like a, it's a thriving area. It just seems like, you know, that, 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 that piece to, to pull it together.
The problem with that is with most of those franchises, you have to have so many like car traffic, whatnot.
Right.
Because I know when Hurricane Grill came in, we actually tried to get them to take the old county building. We met with them. But for their franchise, they have to have so many vehicles come by in a day.
Forty thousand.
Yeah, two thousand.
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand. And you're just not going to get that on a main street. So that's why they had to go on forty. But it is like, a lot of the franchises are like that. That's why most small main streets, they, they typically go after specialty shops.
Sure.
Because you want to get people that'll come down for something other than like a Walmart or something like that because you just can't compete with it. So we do try to look for specialty shops, things like that. That's why it's so important that we work with our partners at the library because they get those type of entrepreneurs that come in that have these specialty shops, so.
And do you guys have the, the most current census information? What's the most current?
Yes, I'm, I, I update it yearly in the beginning of the year. I put it in that packet, it's in the relocation packet, actually. Every year I do update that with the current census information and information from the economic development to, to revise the statistics in there.
Thanks.
All right. I'm going to go over promotions really quickly. I don't want to bore everyone. But promotions is basically marketing our town to everyone, whether it be our, our local visitors, our, our local citizens, visitors, new businesses, things like that. So we try to do that with our events and also marketing materials. We'll move on to the next one. We have a list of events. As you can see, we, we do do a lot of events downtown. Most of them are to bring foot traffic downtown. A few are like fundraisers. Some are also recognition type events. But as Margie had started earlier with the First Fridays, we are adding more music and things to draw more people downtown. Also in your packet is a map. Each First Friday, our office actually makes a map of every participating business and we drop it off to all the businesses that shows all the, all the places that are participating. It started off as just one, basically, the Pilot and the Page, and it's grown. We have the Arts Council. Now we even have Trinity Physical Church has joined on. They're doing food on First Fridays. The Elkton Station's been open, the, the college has been open, the Arts Council. So we're, we're growing with that event and with that, we're trying to add music to bring even more people downtown. We do our Elkton's Own Antique Roadshow. This is kind of like our fundraiser for the year. We actually hold it upstairs in this building. And when we do have a backup, we encourage people to go downtown, you know, visit our shops and whatnot, come back in a few hours because it, it does get crowded with people bringing in their antiques. And we hold that the third Saturday of February every year. Citizen of the Year is a recognition event. Each year someone is chosen by previous Citizen of the Years and it's held in March every year and it's just a great chance to recognize someone in our Elkton community. Our car shows have been doing fantastic when the weather cooperates. We can, on a good weather day, we usually get a hundred cars or more. And it's great to see that our new businesses are taking advantage of this. I know the Pilot and the Page and Bell Connells are very keen with the, the wives of the, the cars, gentlemen that, that come in and shop at their businesses and it just seems to be getting better and better. Elkton on the Move, this is the second year we've done that. We partnered with Dave Moore from Gracie's Cafe and he also does Dave's Running Club. And this is actually an event that we actually get to give back to the community. We helped them out and we're able to give back. The last two years we've been giving money back to diabetic education and Hurricane Grill sponsored this year's fest. The Memorial Day Parade, we brought back last year for the town's 225th anniversary. And then we, we reinstated it again this year. We're hoping to grow it and, and actually keep it because we weren't sure how well it would do, but the, the response has been pretty positive about it. So we're hoping to grow it even more next year. We did have a nice crowd and it was actually spaced out pretty well. We had a lot at the Armory as well and we're just hoping to make it bigger and better next year.
Was that her all there? I thought I saw her.
You could have been. And then Margie had talked about Pink Town Purple where we partnered with American Cancer Society. And it's basically just a way to bring about cancer awareness in the month of May. All of our downtown merchants are trying to decorate their windows purple. We have ribbons that get put up, purple ribbons throughout the town. They do a remembrance tree. They, they do the jail where they try to, I want to thank the mayor and Commissioner Jawoski for actually jumping into jail this year to help, yeah, their funds for the cancer society. But we do that every year and we're, we're glad to be a part of that. Our National Marriage Day celebrates Elkton's marriage history. We do that the second Friday in June every year. We have couples that come and get married or renew their vows. They get the horse and carriage ride. We do a little wedding cake, champagne reception. We have a DJ. It's just a fun event and we actually do have a lot of people that come back year after year. We have somebody that came back after ten years, I think. They got married here ten years ago and they came back this year to renew. So it's a, it's a great little event. Our musical mains, we still do those in the summer every Thursday from July to about mid-September from 5:30 to 7:30. And it's just a great way to come out and spend a evening downtown, bring out your lawn chairs, sit on the quarter and just listen to some of our great local performers. Fall Fest has been our most exciting event and our most popular event. It's the third Saturday in September every year. We do a kickoff party that Friday. This year we've actually moved another car show to the Friday because we have a doo-wop band that will, I think, lend very well to that event. We have crafters, vendors, demonstrators, contests, live entertainment. We have thousands of visitors in one day and it does benefit our main street merchants who are able to have a spot for free right up in front of their business if they choose.
One quick question, is are we going to be able to bring the Fireman's Challenge back this year?
Not this year. Their price is just too high.
It's too much.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot higher than what it used to be and it's just not feasible to gain that much sponsorship. Our Halloween parade, we're lucky to have a chair for that, Roger Owens. He helps out with that every year. With his help, we have over seven hundred participants every year. We give out free food to everyone at the end, hot dogs, chips, cookies, juice. It's just a great family-friendly event and it's, it's, we look forward to it every year. Our Small Business Person of the Year, that's November every year. It's a chance, we give our members a chance to actually nominate who can run for that. There are a few stipulations, like you have to have been in business at least five years and you just have to be, you know, doing very well in your business. But we let them nominate and then from there we choose a winner every year. And then our tree lighting ceremony, Margie talked briefly about that. We partner with the Union Hospital Auxiliary every year and actually secretly fire company, Santa, secretly takes Santa to the hospital by a fire truck and then they light the tree there and then they'll come down to the Lions and usually we have the mayor and Santa light our trees. And then we give out cookies and there's free pictures with Santa. And then also our printed materials that are in your packet. I briefly talked about the, the map for First Friday. We also have the relocation packet, which is updated yearly. We have our musical main listings. There's also the benefit of membership in there, our calendar events, and then the historic walking tour that we participated in last year. Margie, do you want to hold that up real quick under there? Margie and myself went around to most of the businesses and we made up signs for all the participating businesses and then that coincided with that historic walking map. So as you went around the town, you could see the historic businesses. If they weren't open in the windows, they did have the history there so you could read more about it. And that's what we did for the 225th. And then in closing, I, we just wanted to say thank you for allowing us to come and present more information on the Elkton Alliance. We're glad that you, you know, you give us a platform to be able to tell you what, what we do and we hope that you continue to partner with us in the future. And just wanted to let you know that we do have an open door policy, so if anybody ever has questions, feel free to stop in the office. We're always willing to answer.
Okay. I just have one more question. On your committees, are you one-person committee or do you have people beneath you, like four or five people underneath of you? Is it just a one-person committee?
Some of the committees are one-person committee, others are not. It just depends on how much work is involved, how many volunteers we can get. Many of the committees may have unofficial volunteers that jump in and others, when we do a particular project, eight or ten, twelve people will jump in on some of them. Yeah, we've got it covered. We, we are doing our best. We have a great group of volunteers here. Everyone that's on our board does a great job. Some of them have a little niche. They do something better than others and we take that effort from them and we use it to do the best that we can. And again, I want to reiterate, reiterate what she said, but Jessica said is we appreciate the help that you, the commissioners and the mayor gives us. I remember back, and I'll say the old days, because they've been around a long time, where the town, whenever we asked for any kind of help, we virtually did not got nothing. But nowadays I, I do really thank the Public Works, the, the help that you give us with the police that blocking the roads off. I mean, all that makes any of these events that we do, it makes them work. And then of course, the economic side of it, we, we are your economic team and there's not a day goes by that somebody's not trying to promote downtown a business and also recruit more members and make this place better for everyone.
Well, I think when I was asking, think possibly would it be conducive so that maybe you put on your website or something that you're looking for more volunteers to join some committees and try to get some of the residents maybe involved that have some good ideas that may, they might want to share with you?
That's a good opportunity.
And develop a committee. I mean, there's probably a lot of people out there, if I really think a lot about our town and I'd like to get involved and might want to share their ideas with you, there might be an idea to try to reach out to them and see if they could help.
Well, thank you, everybody.
Anybody have a question? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's Empty Bowls?
Empty Bowls is a fundraiser that pottery studios across the country, the people who work the pottery studio create bowls. It's kind of a, a nod to the hungry in our country. And so it's by selling the bowls, they raise money for some sort of, you know, and then what they do is they serve soup and bread along with it. Not that the bowls they purchase because they don't pay the money, but they have soup that is donated by all the several area restaurants.
I totally mentioned it. It's a pretty big deal. I've got bowls every area. I always tend to buy a couple bowls, but the number of people that show up there and these restaurants are doing, it must be five or six different restaurants are donating the soups and the spread. And the council brings people in and out.
And they just have the bowls kind of marked between five and twenty dollars and so usually they sell out every bowl. They make like, I think, a thousand bowls. So, you know, go in there and grab their bowls and pay, some people will donate more money than the bowl is even, you know, the possible bowl because they know more money's going to the children's shelter. So it's, it's a wonderful event.
Now, if you're on your way out, help yourself to some pretzels back there. Have some pretzels, said Roger.
Can I say one thing? When someone asks about the, the, one of the benefits, one of the benefits, actually two that members like the best is, one, they're free advertising on our website. And when new people come into town, we actually, if they're looking for someone to do air conditioning or weather, or whatever, we recommend our members first. And the other one is our weekly what's happening that all of you get. Like that could go to three people at the hospital, but then they send it out to twenty of their friends and that really gets the word out of what's happening in the town of Elkton.
Okay. All right, Ken, you ready? Sit back there.
I'll copy real brief.
You could, you could have tracked, snacked on the pretzels back there.
You know what? I should have. I wanted to tell you that October the eighteenth is, is the, going to be the day for the Alliance Golf Tournament this year. And it's going to be at Chesapeake Bay Coors at the Rising Sun area. So it's already set, it's finalized. So it'll be October the eighteenth. So have a good time. So anyway, I just wanted to say that, but boy, I had a whole lot of stuff to talk to you, but no, I'm just kidding. The, I'll just give you an update, quick update on the Water and Waste for Facilities. They're doing very well right now and the, we have done some things. We got the, the dryer system has been down. We finally got it up and running. We had the thermal recycling pump bearings and seal blew out and it took us two months to get the parts. They came from Europe and we ordered the parts because we got them last week and we finally got it up and running and it's doing okay now. So anyway, everything's good. Plant's running great. The, some of the results to share with you, I think these results are the lowest results that I've shared with you so far in the last five years. But I got to share this one, the total nitrogen, the average total nitrogen for May was point nine-nine, like it was less than one, one milligram per liter, point nine. And that's, that's definitely the lowest we've been able to achieve. And the, of course, the phosphorus was point oh-four, which is, you know, the Korean delegation just can't believe we're getting those numbers. So that's, that's kind of the highlights. The, one, one thing I wanted also to tell you is the, the, what is the quarterly disinfection byproduct report that we do for the portable water? Those numbers came back extremely low again. I mean, we're really nailing the disinfection byproducts. So I mean, they're, they're just extremely low. We did complete the semi-annual synthetic organic compound report, which is done twice a year and there were, there were no detects for that, so that's another good thing. I think the last thing I'm going to tell you is that, you know, the EPA requires water systems over ten thousand residents to start this unregulated contaminant, but it's called the unregulated contaminant rule. And so we started the sampling for that this, this past month. So that, we kicked that off. So that'll be ongoing for about a year. We'll be sampling at, at the, the surface water treatment plant and the wells and then out in the distribution system, we'll be doing a sampling for unregulated contaminants. So at that, that, that's been initiated, so.
How'd we do with the, all this rain we had?
Well, we did really well. We, you know, the plants, the wastewater plant, you know, gets hit pretty good because of the I-9. And of course, the water plant got hit really bad because of the high turbidity. I mean, we had high turbidity and high color in the raw water and it was just off the charts. I mean, we had like, I think it got up to five hundred, six hundred N T U turbidity in the Big Oak Creek. Now, you know, we did really well. I mean, it was not, it was expensive to, to treat that water when it's that turbid and that has that much color in it, it's, it's, it's not cheap. You know what I mean? Because we, it requires a lot of chemical addition, more than normal. And so that, but we, you know, we, we kicked it, we kicked butt really. We did really well. I guess one of my concerns is that, and I know you're aware of this, and maybe I shouldn't bring it up now, but I will anyway. The, you know, of course, every time it rains, Big Oak Creek floods at the, at the, right there at the water plant. And it not only floods out, you know, the park, but it, it endangers the water plant. And we have to fight that, constantly fight that. And, you know, I'm, I'm ready to call up M D E and as a matter of fact, M D E's coming out tomorrow. They want to GPS the new wells, well number two, and the new well over next to the wastewater treatment plant. I think that's going to be, is that going to be well five, notice?
Five.
Okay, they're coming tomorrow, they're going to put the GPS. But anyway, if there's any way we can get a permit to clean out that debris underneath that bridge because every time it rains, the bridges, there's so much debris there.
You don't have to tell me.
I know, you know, and there's a sandbar right on the downstream side and, and it, there's no room for it, any, you know, because it's blocked. And we, we need to get a permit because I'm telling you that every, this is a very, I'm very worried about this because it, the water backs up so bad that it, it actually encroaches on the water treatment plant. And I, you know, we've got water that comes in through the foundation in the, in the very back of the treatment plant where we have our ball chemical stores and, and, you know, we, you know, have to pump it out. And it gets into the waste holding tank and then we, we can't pump it out of the waste holding, or backwash holding tank, I'm sorry, backwash waste holding tank is where we... you've got Big Oak Creek filling up your filter backwash holding tank, there's no place to put the backwash. And we've been really fighting that now. So, you know, if you don't mind, I'd love to have a talk with MDE, because I think, you know, we've got to get a permit to clean that underneath that bridge, because it would do a lot better if the debris wasn't there, I'm telling you. So...
No, we did get a lot of good pictures, and I sent a letter to the secretary.
You did?
Yep.
That's awesome.
Sending visual pictures of them, but maybe a letter from you guys.
I'll send it out tomorrow.
That would maybe be some help in telling them of the problems that we're having.
They don't think they realize the danger that this is putting on the town's water supply.
Well, and not only that, I had it down on my notes. State Highway is making a mess. They clean the road, and they throw it on our property, and it looks awful now. We have a mound of dirt. We have, all the debris is right there on both sides. I mean, that is not fair to us. Someone has got to do something. They throw the trees that are in the middle of the street on town property for us to clean up. If they're going to clean up, they need to clean up and take it away. That debris, by them bridging now, is disgraceful. I don't know what we have to do. There's branches, there's everything. And they're just, they scoop it up and throw it off to the sides, and it's our problem. That is not right.
The sandbar is now on our road.
What's that? I'm sorry?
They schedule that specially. I mean, they don't just have, somebody can run up here because they have Elk County.
Well, when it floods, they should clean it up. That's not, opening a road is not cleaning it up.
Can you find out from Kenny if and when they're going to have someone up there to clean it out? Because that's a mighty big mound. I mean, it's like the sandbar went from the water to our road. It's all on our road now.
All the swales are full, so.
Yeah.
I was out there today.
We'd like to have them cleaned out.
Poses, storm again this weekend.
Well, you know, it's all right sometimes to write letters, but how come you can't have them to come in and ask what their expectations are?
Absolutely. That's it.
Sure, I deal with Kenny all the time.
You didn't hear what I said. You didn't hear what I said. I said it's nice to write letters, but sometime, we as a board, and as Murray Joe posed the question, sometime, I'd like to sit down face to face and hear what somebody's answering.
I would too.
Because you can put anything on a piece of paper, but a word of mouth becomes different too.
I'd say they come here.
Well, I want to, I'd like to chime in on that, too. It just seems, it appears, the perception is that this is kind of like old hat. Every time it floods, hey, just throw the stuff to the side, and they'll be okay until we get to it. And that's just my perception.
It's been like that for 50 years.
Right. So, yeah, I think they really need to hear how kind of frustrated we are, and maybe, you know, let us know if, you know, how it can be done quicker, sooner, better, everything, you know? Because we have a, we have a community to answer to, you know? Not just about what we, you know, think, or it's about what needs to be done.
I tell you that. It's so critical, because you could lose your life.
Just to have a meeting, meeting with them, face to face.
It's that bad? I mean, I'm going to let them know. I'm sorry. Because, you know, I don't have to come here and say, well, we can't have to shut the water plant down because it's contaminated, because Big Oak Creek is in your clear well now. You know what I mean? It's, and it's...
I've never seen anything like it my whole life.
The issue, the issue is more than the bridge, because as the mayor pointed out, I think, I don't know if it was the last meeting, the amount of flow that came down the creek, the bridge wouldn't have made any difference whether it was there or not. You got, that thing, you got a few seconds coming down Big Oak Creek. The flood plain is its relief valve. It'll flood, it'll flood continuously, whether or not the creek, I mean, the bridge is clear or not. It's just too much for the creek.
Yeah, bad to least resistance.
It's getting up, and you start at 5,000. It only takes a, slightly less than 1,000 to flood it. There's five ponds that are coming down there, especially just for county. So we've had a bad spade of foul weather, and I don't care all the, all the work, what we've done with the board of engineers and everything else, it won't make any difference. We can continue to try to get it cleaned up, make a work on the state highway to do that. You always have flooded. There's no way to avoid it.
Well, I still say, I would still, I'm around, I think that bridge needs to be raised.
I agree.
And I don't disagree with that. I'm just saying, do not think that raising the bridge or removing the bridge will solve flooding. You always have flooded.
It will help tremendously.
It's flooding, that's what it's for, huh?
It will help tremendously.
But we don't know.
When I was first elected, I went before storms, stood there, and Commissioner Givens drove up, I'll never forget the day, and watched the water coming through. Watched, 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 and you see a tree get stuck. You see branches get stuck. You see everything get stuck. Then the water can't go through. Then it starts going up the road. Then it crosses the road. So if that bridge was larger, and those things did not get stuck, it would flow a little bit more. It might, I'm not saying it's going to solve it, but it doesn't take an engineer to fix, to watch and see how that works. And if you watch and see how it works, that's what happens.
They just sit in their office and play with paperwork and computers, and they're not out here actually seeing it physically is what happens, from what we always get to them. They know, but it's the engineers, and people have to come up with an idea to fix the bridge.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Ken.
You're welcome.
All right, Louis.
At the latest workshop, I gave a letter that was sent from the district engineer to the town regarding a gateway sign. These are not the wave sign, these are gateway signs. The, we had a conversation with the state highway, actually several times, but most recently, in which the gateway sign, and I think you have a little picture on there, that's just a sketch that they prepared, not us. And they put a sign at, in the median at Blue Oak Creek, Glen Bridge is on Route 40. That's the location. Initially, when the mayor was, got involved with this, with the new delegate Rudolph, we had to look under the impression that the state would pay for all the construction design and fabrication, et cetera. But subsequent to the meeting where we had with the district engineer, found that they will not do that. They will install it, of course, and do the landscaping that we designed. We have to actually create the sign and submit it to the engineers for review and all that.
Let me just back up a little bit, too. Louis, the reason this all came about with delegate Rudolph was the fact that they put the barriers down the middle of Route 40. And he got myself, Jim Riverhart, and Bob McKnight together, asking our opinions of it, number one. And we, of course, we didn't particularly like it, because it just distracted from the scenery, more or less. But the new federal state highway has changed our guidelines now. Instead of something like maybe 10 feet, they narrowed it down to four feet. So I think it's got four feet or so, has to have a guard rail. And I told delegate Rudolph, as long as I've been around and been in the fire company, we've never had a crossover accident on Route 40 where they had a head-on where it's crossed over. But it seems how it has to happen. He suggested, well, for cause that, what if we put up some gateway signs in each of your towns? And I said, well, that's fine. I said, you come up with an idea, that'd be great. And, of course, he did go to state highway, and he, of course, apologized to me and the rest of the mayors during the fact that the state highway did tell him that they were going to pay for everything. And as Louis just mentioned, when we're meeting, we went to the meeting with state highway about it, the bottom line came back down to us and said, oops, we'll put it up, but you guys got to pay for it. So we were all kind of taken back by the situation.
Well, I suggest that we put up a sign like this. This is a three foot by six foot sign on Route 213 facing northbound traffic at French Town Road. If you've ever been down there, I'm sure everybody has seen this sign. The state highway, the sign that they allow us to put up, can't say anything other than welcome to Elk County, and it can have a town seal. They allow that.
You say will, or not?
You will.
They will. They will allow, yeah. Well, they will, because they did. But I suggest that instead of going to the expense of designing a sign that I'd be authorized to go back to the state highway and say, we want you to put up this sign. They made that sign, and I know it'll meet their specification, because they actually created it. And we'll put one of them up on Route 40, and if we want to throw some mulch and some bushes around, we can do that, too, at a minimum expense. But I think probably 99% of the people who drive down Route 40 and go through Elk County know Elk County's here. So we can just, I think that at a minimum expense, we should attempt to do this, rather than create a larger, more elaborate sign that says the same thing, and go through all the steps that you have to go through, the veterans that guide on in there, for the review process and comment and approval, and then fabrication of it. That could run into several thousand dollars, just to create a sign that says welcome to Elk County. I think we'd probably get to state highway either do this or at a minimum expense.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Well, I was just curious, was this sign from the state, the brown, or is this something that was just generated by?
Something we put together when we had a meeting.
Well, the reason I asked was because I know several years ago, I was on a committee with state highway coming in to do all the signage in every town, and funding had stopped right before it was coming to Cecil County. But every color of the sign was for a purpose, whether it's a historic area or business district. So I was just curious, you're proposing the green, and this is brown, just to be...
I don't know. They just, I think they just, one of their graphic people just made that up as a show and tell meeting. We would have to design the signs miniature, obviously the practical safety, the component design people and all that, because a lot of stuff you have to go through. But I'd like to eliminate all that process, and go to a much more simplistic sign that says the same thing. And I already know the state highway would probably approve that. How can you say that for sure? I know they approved the design of it, because they created it. I mean, they could say, well, you can't do that. And you already did, you know? And they know. So I say we do that.
I think we ought to try and see when you need to get that done.
Ken, can I ask you a question? What exactly are they going to pay for, again? Just the actual installation?
Yeah, if we deliver the signs, they'll...
They'll put it in the ground.
And, but they will, they said, according to the letter, so they will do the, purchase the landscaping, which I'm sure is pretty minimal expense. Some mulch in, they'll dig it up, put some mulch. It would take a little labor, but they'll do that part. I think the mayor was taken aback when he found out that they weren't going to do this at all, because they're leaning into this whole conversation within about this gateway sign in their first place, because they were going to do it. And they kind of reversed gears on us halfway through this, as I said, this discussion of it. So I wouldn't see putting harder and sacrerder money on the line to make the possibility of this. It would be just effective in total, like, people driving down the road at 50 miles an hour, 60, would all come to Elk County, you know what I mean?
All right, to that end, go ahead.
All right, that's fine.
All right, Louis.
Next item I have is ordinance 7.213. This is for adoption tonight, was introduced on July 3rd. At the last meeting, I emphasized the amendment to this particular ordinance acts struck language under the credit for where and sewer service specifically strikes the language that says the owner of a fruit or real property that is connected to the town's water distribution and or sewer collection system, who permanently disconnects otherwise or otherwise discontinued where or service to the building lot, may grant credits equivalent for the disconnected or discontinued service connection for allocation to another property, A, that is under the same ownership as the building lot, for which the water and sewer are being permanently disconnected and discontinued, and B, for which are permanent authorizing new residential or commercial construction in issue. If this amended ordinance struck that language, the order will be changed, and will be made, and it's a standard change in law. I recommend it for the top ordinance 7 that 213.
Okay, our motion's accepted, ordinance 7 dot 213.
Same.
Upset.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
I don't have any, really, any old business, Murray Joe.
I don't have any old business, no.
Nothing?
I think, Louis, forgive me for not coming to you earlier, I just forgot. But do you have any type of date or timeline when they might finish the curb work over there off of, what is that, South Street and...
At the barber shop?
Yeah.
The Collum Street. I met with him, with Dan, they're going to do that.
No, I'm not questioning, I'm not questioning that part.
They are going to do it.
I'm sorry?
They are going to do it.
Yeah, I'm not questioning that.
I think they'll win.
I asked about a time, timeline.
Okay, I'll figure it out. I can't give it to you now.
Okay, all right, no problem.
Okay, I just had a couple of things. We received a letter from Holzer, regardless, regards to some debris he left on the sidewalk. Ronald Holt is all, and he's asking us for waiver of the invoice that he got from the town, because we did have to go out and clean it up, which amounted to $246.02. But I don't mind my sin, I think Charlie, you complained about it. There's a picture of the debris that was left there.
That's all I saw. Steve as well.
Oh, okay. Well, I just wanted to make sure everybody was okay with it, so Steve had the okay to just send him a letter stating that...
You want it?
All right? Steve? Okay.
We're not going to waive it.
What's that now?
Not going to waive it.
Not going to waive it.
As the office are, every time that invoice is waived, then you all got the picture of the...
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see the lead on it.
Yeah. Well, the only other thing I have is, on the update that Greg Holsey, Holsey from the state highway sent us some time ago, I asked him a couple of things, if he could, they could do it. And one was like on Delancey Road, to put an arrow signal up there. But they said, of course, the, I don't know what it is, we put another light up there, but they said they would not take another light, that they couldn't put another light up there.
Where?
At Delancey Road in Red Hill, there. Because people are making the turns there. But he said what they would do, possibly put some arrows on the ground on the roadway. In fact, they were looking at them, and then as soon as they get back, after they concur with everything, they probably would install them in the near future. The other big thing was widening of Delancey Road. We have an awful backup along Delancey Road, because people want to make the right turn, and, but anybody going to left turn backs the traffic up.
That's true.
You know? So what they're going to try and do for us is, they said widen the turn lane is going to be difficult, given the adjacent roadway ditch, which is, there is a ditch on that side. But they're having the traffic staff looking into the, extending their right lane on the westway direction to be create a more of a storage area, move that over, so they could have, you know, the left turn and then have the right turn. There's more room on this side than there is on this side. So they're looking at doing that, to help us get that traffic down. Because initially, I think I thought when one developer was going to do that, they thought the developer would do it. But since they're no longer doing that. And then I asked them about the roundabout on Red Hill and Muddy Lane. Right now, it's the construction, the roundabout is recommended for construction funding. The project requires utility relocations and right-of-way acquisition. And if all stays on course, the foxman date to start your actual construction is 18 months. So we will have a turnaround at there. So it's going to be totally different. Okay, I think that's...
Probably roundabout is...
Roundabout, yeah. On Muddy Lane and Red Hill. Of course, you know, they're putting one down, a 279 in Blue Ball. They're putting that one there, too. That one's probably done before this one, possibly. So that's all I have, Murray Joe.
I have just two things. One, at MML this year, there was a booth... One, um, at MML this year, there was a booth there, CGI, community video program, and, um, the mayor had listened to a conference call with me, and, um, the Elkton Alliance would like to go forth and do this. And it actually, I've been presented with several of them for the community that, um, I didn't feel were appropriate. This one, I think it's great for attracting residents, business, everything to Elkton. Um, it gives, it is no cost. Um, it will be a partnership, actually, between us because they like the towns to sign on and the town to show off their town. Something from the mayor might be said, or one of your town employees, whomever, commissioners, whoever you choose, highlight, they bring a film crew out, and the film that I, uh, several that I looked at or re-looked at were very, very well done. Um, and then people in the businesses actually are the ones that sponsor on it, that pay for this video. And the one nice thing that was different about this than any that I've seen is they are affiliated with relocate.org. So, if you wanna say, "I wanna visit Elkton. I wanna relocate to Elkton" in your Google search, it pops you right up to this video. And it's, shows everything about the town, what's available, uh, the people along the edges that sponsor, and I actually already talked to someone today that wants to be a sponsor. It's, uh, for businesses, it's a thousand dollars for two years, but if you click on them, they actually get to speak and tell, like, they show some showing their trucks, if it's maybe an HVAC or, you know, a, a company you would use if you bought a house or had one built here or something. So, um, it's really, really nicely done. Um, and the company is CGI. So, I think, um, they sent some paperwork, and I hope that we can par, partner on this, and that would be a great tool to use to promote the town at no cost to us.
Right, yeah, 'cause I, I got the information, and the only thing the town would be, uh, it's no cost to the town either, so the only thing would be a letter of introduction for the program on our, on our letterhead, uh, to the businesses, and assist with the content and the script for the community video program. And they do everything else. Um, and even if we only get the one, uh, sponsor, and we, they do a complete video of the town, it stays up there. You get one, that's fine. And they give you a whole shot of the whole town, and of course, the business person gets a good shot. And I think it's a good way to show the town. And they do all the work. No cost, no nothing.
And if they're, we're too far, if we know a good videographer, we can tell them in the area, and, um, they will use local people to do that if they feel, I already sent them. Earl Piner's brother, I said, he has done movies on the Discovery Channel and, um, excellent filming. So, I did give them his information if we sign and choose to move forward.
So, I'd just like to see if we can get the consensus, or if you wanna make a motion to, um, try this. Um, from what I see now of it too, it's gonna be a real beneficial to the town, I think it's, so...
And what, it would be on, on a separate website or something?
They'd put it on, I think, how she's explained all the websites.
They link onto all of our websites.
All the websites.
Oh, it'll be a link for our...
But it'll actually be a link, if you go on, I could send it to you all to look. Um, if you, or you just go into Google search and say, "I wanna relocate to Cambridge, Maryland", and you'll see it come up, how it's presented. It'll bring it to your website. If they're looking for business, they come to ours. Um, it's just very, very nicely done.
And it's, it's, it's police and all of that? In other words, they can stop any kind of negative thing being put up?
Oh, nothing's put up unless we put it up there.
Oh, unless we put it up?
Yes. They don't put up anything. They come to us and like, say, we wanted to film, like they said, if you have a festival you wanna film, or an event that shows off your town, or you wanna go to a park on a sunny day when somebody's having a picnic. You know, it's something, you, they do what you want them to do.
Like different segments you wanna put up there so they can show it as one?
You wanna show, you know, basketball courts, if people have kids that wanna come, you know?
Yeah.
The schools, the hospitals, whatever, all the benefits that you have.
Okay, that's awesome. Like I said, just add, I don't know.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, just to know who would, who'd be responsible.
Right, yeah.
Police and they...
It's us.
Keeping it up and all that.
They do all that. They take care of that.
But they do it. We just tell them what to film.
But I have, I have the information here, and I have to sign it and, and get it back to them so they can set up a scheduling, um, time for them to come down and look at what they wanna do and how we wanna video the town and do everything.
Sounds like very positive things.
It is. I think it is.
Win, win situation.
I think that, yeah.
Okay with everybody, consensus, oh. Do that? Alright? Okay. Then we'll get this off to them and let them know that, uh, it's a go. Um, I think that's it. Hey, Earl, nothing?
Nothing.
Charlie? He left.
May I use his time for a minute?
Pardon?
May I use his time for a minute?
Is he coming back, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just wanna compliment the police department for having bicycles and patrol. I think it's a good thing. Back to your bridge situation, why don't you call Representative Douglas Smigle, Senator Pittkin, and have them sit on this meeting you're gonna have there? After all, they represent you as a town and this county. Does that make any sense to you?
No, that can, yeah.
Absolutely.
Well, what, what way you do that?
Absolutely.
We can do that. Yep. And send a letter to them as well.
Dick Reed sits right here every, every meeting, I don't know where he is tonight, but anyway, when he was a town administrator in nineteen seventy-three, he and Hope Kraus went out there on a Saturday morning with a drag line, cleaned all that stuff out out from under that bridge, and it was empty, open for a long, long time. Mrs. Ken said you just got nothing but a dam. You looked at one side of that creek, and you looked at the other side. It's this one.
They kinda just went on and did it, didn't have any permits or permission?
They did.
Okay.
And nothing brought up at this.
Back then, the EPA's not like they are today. But that tidal water, whether any of you are aware of that, that's tidal water up to that bridge. Charlie probably knows that, because he...
Yeah, he is. You're right about that. It's, it's all that sits up there behind it.
Right. That's where all the swine were, you're kidding.
That's right.
Well, despite it, it's gotta be significant. I see the pictures on the wall where ships used to go through there.
Mm-hmm.
So...
But, but we still need a permit anyway nowadays, right? To get, we still need a permit? They ain't gonna get in there anymore?
I'm gonna do it. I'm not gonna go to jail.
It's not what we're asking. He's asking if they need a permit.
Yeah, yeah, joint permit takes pretty much.
But have we ever asked, did we, can we get a permit to clean it up ourselves? Well, I...
I suggested that, uh, since the state wouldn't do it, the town would have to bear the...
And I had questioned that before as well. I, I wanna clean up that. It looks awful. And it's causing damage.
But you need the authority of the board because it would be very expensive to do.
And, and maybe that's something we can discuss at this meeting, right?
Right, yeah. You don't wanna shoot from the hip on this one.
Right.
Uh, because the, uh, process for getting the permit takes time because of the accessory evaluation. Board of Engineers are involved in that because it's title. Maybe he's involved in it, the accessory committee's involved in it. And, uh, the process to get the permit and the permit would be, uh, issued to the town. The town would have to have a permit, uh, permission from the state highway to operate any equipment in there right of way. And once we are outside the right of way, cleared the settlement, you know, they'll call for dams and all that kind of stuff. Uh, you're talking some big money, you know?
Mr. Smith?
General funds.
Mr. Smith, you had mentioned getting our state delegates involved, letting them go ahead and do a little bit of workforce.
Well, they wouldn't apply for the permit or anything.
But they could probably push some issues, couldn't they?
Yeah, they could fight for us, give us, give us some offense, back us up.
They can't do anything for you because all the regulations are set by law, and you have to follow those rules. Uh, they, they can't usurp, uh, their own authority and...
But they can, that's, that's...
Well, they need to know how we feel. They are our officials.
What I'm saying is, uh, if you authorize me to proceed, we, we can do it. I don't need anybody's, uh, any delegates' permission. I, I know how to do it.
I, I don't think it's as much as saying delegates' permission. To have them at this table to realize the problems here in Elkton that they... Senator Pittkin lives in Elkton. It's right in his backyard. So, they should be here, listen to our problems, see if they can offer any assistance, and go from there. I mean...
Don't me that. I...
I know, but I'm just...
Send a letter to Senator Pittkin.
A letter though isn't anything. Go home, love.
Will you want me to go speak to the two of them and bring them here? I'll do that.
No.
It's not gonna happen with you people.
We'll get it done.
It's very simple.
We'll get it done.
I just make the protocol, that's all.
We'll get it done.
Alright.
But you've been negative about this whole thing. Anytime it's ever been brought up, there's always been negativity instead of trying to get something done about it. The bridge, the bridge up on, up on Blue Ball Road right there, like Charles, they widen statewide that bridge. There's less traffic there than there is on that bridge you're talking about. Much less traffic. And there's no problems with up the bridge up there. You have no right of way. You have no walk space going up that road at all till you get to the bridge and you get on each side because they said the bridge wasn't wide enough. This bridge down here is not near as big as that bridge up there was. But it seems like it's always negative about trying to get something done with that. If you bring those two guys in here, maybe they can help you. They can certainly intercede and talk to somebody.
Can't hurt.
The suggestions, you can't hurt anything.
Yeah.
After all, that's what they're elected for.
Amen.
They can mostly...
You want to invite, uh, Pittkin, uh, Senator Pittkin to a meeting?
Alright, I'll do it.
authorize me to do that, and I'll do it.
Alright, let's do it.
Yep.
Let's do it. Anything would be of, uh, help to get this bridge. I mean, we just can't take much more.
You already sent a letter to the Secretary of Transportation now.
We, we need to start at our state, our state officials here and let them go. They're in there three months of the year. They need to do something for us.
So, if you want Senator Pittkin to come to the meeting, that's all I go.
Representatives of the thirty-sixth district, how about that?
So, you want more than him?
And see who comes to the meeting.
Alright, we'll get that done. Alright, my motion to adjourn.
I'll do it, sir.
Second.
Second. This means adjourn.